Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon. I now call to order the November 18th Committee of the whole meeting. Madam Clerk, for the record of this meeting, please note that Mayor Haxson is absent with notice. That takes him to Item B, Declaration of Interest. Any members of committee declarations of interest? I have a declaration of interest under I two, which is the revised draft built heritage study. As I have previously declared, I own a company that owns a heritage property within East Goulunbury, so I'll be stepping back for that portion of the meeting. And takes us to a land acknowledgement. The town of East Goulunbury recognizes and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the first peoples of the Williams Treaties, First Nations, and other indigenous peoples, and on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipwas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Goulunbury's closest First Nation community, and recognize the unique relationship the Chipwas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. Community announcements. Any members of the committee wish to share any community announcements? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you Acting Mayor Johns. I have two community announcements. The first is about our Santa Claus parade that's coming up on Saturday, December the sixth, in Mount Albert at 11:00 a.m. in the morning, and it will be proceeding. We're looking forward to seeing Santa a second time in as many weeks. And I also want to make a community announcement about the combination smoke detector carbon monoxide alarm. We were invited to the EG Fire Station in Holland Landing yesterday by the media with regard to the N Bridges Project Zero campaign. And this is a tremendous campaign. They are, they have provided East Goulunbury with a grant of 260 alarms from N Bridge, and so we are grateful for that, for N Bridge's provision of those. And we were discussing about safety issues, and they mentioned that on January 1st, legislation is actually changing, which requires a smoke and CO2 alarm on every level of every home and outside all sleeping areas. So we want to thank the Ontario Fire Marshal, Public Safety Council as well, for being at the event yesterday. And actually, Jamie from the Fire Marshal's office challenged me to challenge all of my fellow councillors to get on board and help promote these combination alarms, and also to make sure that our homes are sufficiently equipped and spread the word amongst our residents in East Goulunbury. Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the fire department, and congratulations on getting the grant from N Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. Any other members of committee wish to share any community announcements? Okay, with that, we will proceed to deputations. Before we begin hearing the deputants, I want to outline expectations for conduct at this meeting. All participants are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and in accordance with the town's procedure bylaw. This includes refraining from interruptions, outbursts, or any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Each deputant will be provided up to five minutes to present their remarks unless council or committee approves a different time, and the meeting will continue in an orderly and respectful manner. The town will not tolerate abusive, threatening, or profane language, or any negative or inappropriate comments directed at members of council, staff, or members of the public. Deputants must limit their remarks to the subject of which they have been granted approval. I would also like to remind everybody of the following rules from the procedure bylaw. No deputant shall speak disrespectfully of any person, use offensive words or unparliamentary language, speak on any subject other than the subject for which he or she has received approval to address council or committee, or disobey the rules of procedure or a decision of the chair or council. If there is disorder, a breach of these rules, or behavior that compromises the safety, fairness, or integrity of the meeting, I may curtail a deputation or rule concluded. Individuals causing a disturbance may be asked to leave. If necessary, the staff will seek assistance from security or police officers. I hope we won't get to that. These expectations help ensure that all participants, whether speaking or observing, can take part in a respectful, safe, and well-managed meeting. We will now proceed. The first deputant is A. Layton on behalf of 31 Sand GP Limited, and I am told that Mr. Layton is here virtually. Mr. Layton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will keep my comments brief. My name, as you know, I'm associate principal with Goldberg Group, and I am here representing the proponent of the development at 31 Sand Road, 31 Sand GP Limited. We are somewhat surprised to see a report being advanced this shortly after a public meeting. As you may recall, a somewhat lengthy public meeting occurred not even a month ago, on October 21st, and yet we are here today considering recommendations to refuse the applications. My client and I believe that the, this course of action leads really to only one outcome, which I don't believe is in the mutual interest of either my client or the town. We would request that this matter be deferred. We feel it's only prudent to allow discussions, which we have been forthright and open in requesting and proceeding with, with town staff to proceed, to allow us to potentially to make a resubmission to address the numerous technical and other comments that have been provided. The language in the staff report itself does seem to indicate that there is a form of development that may be considered appropriate on this property, and absent the ability to have open discussions with staff, we don't feel that it is the right time to consider such an action. I'll conclude there, and happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Is there any members of the committee that wish to ask any questions to the deputant? Seeing none, I'll need a mover to receive the deputation. Counselor Crone, any discussion? All those in favor, motion carries. The next deputant is A. Lankoff making a deputation to the committee regarding Development Services. Mr. Lankoff.
Mr. Chair, members of council, good afternoon. Development Services Report DS 2025-33 of November 18, 2025 states the following. "On September 16, 2025, council was made aware of the potential existence of a built heritage resource on the property. Residents have reported that historic locked cabin is believed to exist within the remaining structure on their property. In response to residents' concerns, staff engaged the owner who has agreed to retain a heritage expert to assess the structure in question. The town intends to have the owner's heritage impact assessment peer reviewed. Staff proceeded with the listing of 31 Sand Road to the Town Register of Cultural Heritage Properties following the Heritage Advisory Committee's correspondence with municipal council on November 4, 2025." However, this is somewhat surprising, given that the October 10 Corporate Services memorandum stated that, "While the town is the authority to add the property to the heritage registry, this action would have no practical effect. If staff and external council believe listing offered no protection, then why did the town proceed with listing only after the Heritage Advisory Committee's, or HAC, correspondence? Furthermore, where is the HAC's actual recommendation? And more importantly, why did the town's October memorandum omit any reference to 'following the process prescribed under the Ontario Heritage Act despite the town's website now implying that such a process was actively followed'? If the listing offers no practical effect, as the town memo states, what meaningful purpose did it serve? This same memorandum also states the town retained external legal counsel to understand its legal rights regarding heritage protection. This is concerning. The town's in-house legal staff are fully capable of interpreting the OHA, yet external counsel was hired at the expense of taxpayers. That decision remains unexplained. The town's website states that because the property was not listed when the zoning and official plan applications were deemed complete, the town no longer has any ability to designate the property under Section 29. This is misleading. It implies finality while omitting that the town can still seek provincial heritage designation under Section 34.5 of the OHA, where the minister holds independent designation authority. Failing to mention this option until my November 4th deputation left residents with an incomplete picture of the town's available tools. The website also claims that in consultation with external legal counsel, the requirement for the HAC to be consulted prior to listing became evident. This requires scrutiny. The HAC has existed for years, and its minutes routinely include recommendations on listing and designation, such as the August 14th recommendation to designate the Old Queensville Public School. The town's sudden discovery of a requirement it has consistently followed is concerning. If staff were unaware, it signals a significant knowledge gap. If they were aware, the rationale for hiring external legal counsel becomes even harder to justify. The town's website accurately notes that any person or body can request a provincial designation under Section 34.5. Legally, body includes municipal councils. The definition is intentionally broad to ensure that organized entities, public or private, can seek ministerial intervention. The town acknowledges this is in its own communications, yet has not taken the obvious next step, formally requesting that the minister consider designating 31 Sand Road for its potential provincial significance. Given that council listed the property following the HAC's correspondence, despite it having no practical effect, it is clear that the town acknowledges the site has heritage value, even though an historical impact assessment has still not been provided by the developer, despite it being referenced by Development Services at the September 16 council meeting. If that is the case, the logical question is, why has the town not sought a provincial designation? Why has there been no outreach to MPP Caroline Maruni's office? As President of the Treasury Board and Minister of Francophone Affairs, Ms. Maruni's support could elevate the urgency of this matter. The absence of any attempt to engage her office or the ministry remains unexplained. Had staff sought provincial intervention months ago, structures with potential historical significance now demolished could have been preserved under Sections 34.6 and 35.2 of the Act. Instead, taxpayer money was spent on external counsel who ultimately provided advice that did not materially improve the town's ability to act. After my November 4th deputation on Section 34.5, the town updated its website to add previously missing information. Accountability requires proactive accuracy, not reactive correction. In light of all this, I am formally requesting the following. First, the council directs staff to pursue a provincial heritage designation for 31 Sand Road under Section 34.5 of the Ontario Heritage Act. Second, the council directs staff to immediately contact the ministry responsible and to seek the assistance and advocacy of the Honorable Caroline Maruni, Member of Provincial Parliament for York Simcoe. It is the responsibility of the municipality to act decisively when heritage resources are at risk. Today, I am asking council to exercise that responsibility with clarity, urgency, and accountability.
Thank you, Mr. Lankoff. Questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, I, a mover to receive the Counselor Leahy. Any discussion? All those in favor? We have a mover. Any discussion? All those in favor of receiving the deputation? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. Motion carries. That takes us to presentations, and there are none at this time, and moving to Item G, council committees, boards, and groups. The first is a Environmental Advisory Committee Report. So this is a report coming from the Environmental Advisory Committee that is on folks' agendas. Counselor Crone, do you want to, do you want to speak to the agenda item? Oh, we also have the chair. Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. Teresa, if you were there, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of council. My name is Teresa Abbott Howland, and I'm a member of EAC. I'm not the chair, and I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee. So I'll speak briefly to introduce this letter that we sent in. So the Environmental Advisory Committee would like to bring the topic of invasive species to the attention of council. There's a little bit of an introduction. Invasive species are plants, animals, insects, or other pathogens that are introduced into an ecosystem outside their native range, and they spread in the new system and cause harm to the environment, the economy, or society in general. So you might have heard of some of these invasive species. Giant hogweed is one, big, very tall, very poisonous plant. Fragmities is the tall, feathery grass that you see growing everywhere now along our roadsides and ponds. Emerald ashborner is an insect that burrows under the bark and kills ash trees. And the new one, the new kid on the block, is the spotted lantern fly that I'm seeing lots of posters about, and that's a potential big threat that could arrive. So a few months ago, the Environmental Advisory Committee had a presentation by a guest speaker from a group called the Invasive Species Centre. They're a Canadian nonprofit organization, and they support municipalities and other organizations in their efforts to learn about and control invasive species. So the Environmental Advisory Committee members learned about some of the environmental and economic harms caused by invasive species when they displace native species and cause biodiversity loss. At the municipal level, the big impacts from invasive species include loss of tree canopy, flooding, blocked stormwater retention ponds, and increased fire hazards. And because of these concerns, many Ontario municipalities have created invasive species management plans to address and mitigate the threats posed by invasive species. So the request that the Environmental Advisory Committee has, the main reason for this report, is to recommend that our town applies for a grant that could be used to assess our current status with invasive species in East Goulunbury, and develop a management plan that would be tailored to our requirements and capabilities. Grants to facilitate monitoring and management of invasive species are available to Ontario municipalities through the Invasive Species Action Fund. It's financed by the Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources, and it's managed by the Invasive Species Centre. There are various levels of grants, but the one that we think is most appropriate for the town would be the Accelerated Impact Grant. It offers awards of up to $15,000 for projects taking place in priority areas, and it would cover the development of the management plan. Grant applications are available yearly. They've opened recently, and the applications are due January 6th. So if we are going to apply for a grant, if the town is going to apply for a grant, action would need to start quite soon. As well as applying for the grant, the Environmental Advisory Committee would also recommend that council invites a speaker to present to council about the impacts of invasive species on municipalities, and how some other municipalities are dealing with this concern, and working to take action and control the damage from invasive species. And the final recommendation that we've made is that the town develops an education campaign to help inform residents about invasive species and actions that individuals can take to manage invasive species on their own properties, or generally helping the town in preventing the spread of invasive species. So that is my short presentation. Thank you very much for your time today, and for considering these recommendations from the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott Howland, for that. Are there questions or comments from the Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much through you Acting Mayor Johns. So my question is, I'm fully supportive of this. I've had conversations in the past with our, with our town's Director of Environmental Initiatives with regard to invasive species, and it's been in the news recently about the water soldiers that are now found in Lake Simcoe, and our waterways are all connected. So, including with the Holland River, and, and our neighbors to the north with Georgina. So I think there are many opportunities here, if they apply for the grant and are successful in getting the grant, that we would be able to increase education and prevent the spread of invasive species. So, fully supportive of this. My question is, with regard to the work and research that you've been done, is there any opportunity for the EG gardeners to get involved with the Environmental Advisory Committee? They, I've also had many conversations with gardeners, and myself included, in terms of educating ourselves about invasive plants. And lily of the valley is apparently an invasive plant, and I had one in my garden, and I didn't even know about it. So, because they're still sold at nurseries around in York region. So I think if we, if we can somehow incorporate or include the possibility of, of engaging others in the community, like the EG gardeners group, to assist and support in the future with this initiative. Is that a possibility?
Thanks, Counselor Leahy. I will say that this, well, this isn't a staff report. I would love if Ms. Abbott Howland was able to respond. If you have any thoughts on was able to respond, if you have any thoughts on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, certainly, the Environmental Advisory Committee is in contact with EG gardeners. A number of our members are in both groups, so there's conversations back and forth. And as far as invasive plants go, certainly, I'm sure the EG gardeners has lots of good information on invasive species, and I think they could be really helpful in informing, especially any information that we're putting out to residents. They certainly are local experts, so I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy. So Counselor Crone, and then Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to our presenter, and thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think this is a great opportunity for the town. It makes sense to get our invasive species under control, not just from an environmental standpoint, but from an economic standpoint. This can be very costly for the taxpayers to deal with this in our town, and if we can get ahead of it, I think that's good, so I am fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you, and thank you, Teresa, for bringing this forward. When I was on the Environmental Services Committee, this had come up many times, but we hadn't landed advice to council. We were advising on other things at the time. And I do know the EG gardeners work very closely with the committee. They were very influential when the committee did the pollinator gardens, so continuing to work with them is great. Counselor Leahy brings up a great point that I had also been thinking about. I was thinking about periwinkle rather than lily of the valley, that sometimes we buy things at nurseries not knowing that they're invasive or their designation changes over time. So I'm wondering, as part of our education, outreach to our local nurseries to find out what plants they're selling and if there's any problems there, making sure that they're aware of our ongoing efforts. And, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, do we have a recommendation on the floor, or can we put that on the screen? Because there's a number of recommendations from the committee that I think we just need to translate into recommendations from council.
So it hasn't been tabled yet, so Counselor Cruthers, do you wish to table it?
I'm happy to table it, but it's Counselor Crone's committee, so I will leave that to him.
Counselor Crone will be moving it, and so we don't need a secondor, so now we can speak to that motion. So Counselor Cruthers, did you want to come back and speak to this, what the clerk is going to put on the screen for us?
Yeah, so my suggestion is just that we upgrade the motion to take out, the Environmental Advisory Committee requests that, because it's coming from council. So it would be, we receive it and then be resolved that council direct staff on all three of those. Just taking out the part that says that the Environmental Advisory Committee requests that.
Counselor Crone, is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion surrounding this?
Sorry. You also need to take out advisory committee recommendations as follows. Just take that out.
Okay, so we have Counselor Crone that has moved this. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Abbott Howland. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much for your time and attention, and fantastic outcome.
So that takes us to item H in the agenda, and I am sitting in the chair, and this is a finance presentation and report regarding water and wastewater that was from a previous meeting that we weren't able to have folks attend. And so they are here now, and we have it on the agenda, and Mr. Marshall is now queued up. Mr. Marshall.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So the study in front of you, it forms part of the requirements that we have to satisfy every five years in order for us to obtain our municipal drinking water licenses under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So the study was conducted by BMA Management Consulting, and Jim Brzezzi, sorry if I messed up your last name, but I just call you Jim. So he's here from BMA Management Consulting, and he's here to provide an overview of the study results. So I'll pass it over to him. He's here remotely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Yes, I'd like to present the water and wastewater long-range financial plan. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, a requirement, the water licenses must be renewed every five years, and one of the requirements of the renewal is to prepare a financial plan. So this financial plan does meet the provincial requirements under the Safe Drinking Water Act. The purpose of the plan is to demonstrate financial sustainability to ensure safe, reliable, and affordable services. The financial plan that we're presenting today covers a ten-year period, although the provincial requirements require only a six-year period, so council is being prudent, looking at it over a ten-year horizon. The plan also includes wastewater, and that's to ensure financial sustainability of the entire system. So just by way of notation, the financial plan is not the budget, which is approved annually by council. However, what it does do, it provides a sustainable financial roadmap for guiding future operating and capital budgets. The next slide, please. So the financial plan is dynamic. Obviously, doing forecasting, it requires a number of assumptions that be made in order to do the forecast. So in this plan, assumptions were made with regard to water consumption to calculate the rates, the funding and timing of the capital projects, whether it be through reserves or debt, the operating cost increase, what are the inflationary cost increases that should be incorporated, and any known future events. So although great effort was made to present accurate financial projections based on the most recent data available, the financial plan should be considered a living document that requires continuous improvement. So like I say, the plan is based on assumptions which could change over the course of the ten-year period. So comparing actual results with projections will lead to improved future planning. Next slide, please. So these are the guiding principles that we used in the preparation of the financial plan. First of all, to ensure a reasonable degree of stability and predictability in the rate burden. The plan calls for large capital projects into the future, which I'll show you in a few minutes. And what we've done is to avoid volatility in rates, smooth the increase, again, to provide stability and predictability in the rate burden. The next guiding principle is to provide a fair sharing in the distribution of resources between current and future rate payers. Intergenerational equity is very important. One of the last things you want to do is postpone costs to future generations. The, another guiding principle is to provide for sustainable cash flows. The maximize financial flexibility, that's to have sufficient reserves for the replacement of the capital assets in any emergency-type situations. Minimize financial vulnerability, make sure that there is manageable debt, and maintain programs and services at their desired levels to meet environmental standards. Next slide. So some of the challenges that we see in the water and wastewater operations is, first of all, it's very costly with limited revenue sources. Currently, there's approximately eleven thousand customers on the system, and the replacement cost for water is six hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, and wastewater is three hundred and sixty-five million dollars. And these assets are aging and will require major upgrades in the coming years. And like I say, there's limited, limited revenue sources to, for the replacement of these capital assets. There's a significant funding shortfall. We looked at the asset management plan that was prepared in 2024, and what the plan recommended was that water assets, that there'd be an annual contribution of nine point nine million dollars to the capital reserve to fund the ultimate replacement of the capital infrastructure. Currently, in the 2025 budget, operating budget, there's only a million dollar transfer to the capital reserve, so that equates to an eight point nine million dollar annual funding gap, which must be paid up. In the case of wastewater, same situation, the asset management plan recommended nine point two million dollars. The current contribution is about one point six million dollars, so there's an annual funding shortfall of seven point six million dollars. Some of the other challenges are rising costs, inflation is increasing, a lot of the expenditure items are increasing in water and wastewater, they foster rate and inflation. The big component of the water and wastewater operating budget is region charges, which is increasing. And then the other, other challenge is, in light of all of this, is to maintain rate payer affordability. Next slide. So just to show the residential cost of service comparison, in New York municipalities, you can see each of the municipalities are listed. We identified them as a letter rather than the actual municipal name. One of the things that you'll note on this chart is that the majority of water, wastewater costs are fixed. As I say, there's significant capital infrastructure. And there's, so there's a strong correlation between the cost of service and population density. So when you look at this chart, you can see that your total costs for water and wastewater is Goulunbury, the second municipality shown, is one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars a year. That's based on a residential consumer using two hundred cubic meters a year. The average of the New York municipalities is one million three, three twenty-three, so you're above the average. But when you look at population density, you have the second, the second lowest population density in the region, and you also have the second highest rates. So again, there's a strong correlation between population density and the total cost of water and wastewater operations. Next slide. So as I mentioned, you have significant capital infrastructure in water. And again, this is taken right from the asset management plan. So one of the challenges, as I mentioned, is the ultimate replacement of the assets and ensuring there's sufficient funds. So you can see from this chart, in the period 2033 to actually 2047, the significant capital funding that is required for the replacement of water infrastructure assets. And so the strategy is that we built into the plan is to gradually increase the capital reserve contributions to fund these costs. So if we go to the next slide, and when we look at wastewater, and again, this was taken from the asset management plan, it's a similar finding. When you get into the 2033 to 2042 period, there's significant capital infrastructure replacement requirements. So again, the same strategy as water is to increase that capital reserve contribution to fund these costs. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the plan is built on assumptions, so these are some of the major assumptions we use in the forecast. Operating expenditures, we assume two point five percent increase annually. Staffing, there's additional staffing requirements that we included, and that's the service new growth and to maintain environmental standards. Consumption, we assume that growth in consumption over the ten-year period of about one point four percent annually. And the York region, which is the largest component of your water and wastewater budgets, a five-point, and this was taken from York region reports, we're using a five point six percent rate increase for water. And in the case of water, the York region costs represented forty-four percent of the budget, and one point seven percent for wastewater. Next slide, please. So this is pretty difficult to read, but this is the results of the plan, incorporating those assumptions that I mentioned. And the other, the other big item in the plan is, you can see the green is the transfer to the water cap, for example, in water, the transfer to water capital reserve. In 2026, we're forecasting a transfer of one point five million, and you can see over the course of the plan, a gradual increase. By 2035, that increases to four point five, almost four point five million. And again, going back to the capital forecast and the asset management plan, that's required to fund those large capital replacement costs that are forthcoming. And the same thing in the wastewater operations. The 2026 budget, we forecast initial contribution to capital of two point one million, and that increases to about three point five million. So you can see that built into the forecast is a gradual infrastructure to the capital reserves to close the infrastructure gap while maintaining rate payer affordability. Obviously, you can't, you can't do something drastic, it will hurt that repair affordability. Next slide, please. The next thing we're asked to look at is the rate structure, so in essence, how you calculate or how you derive the revenues. In terms of the rate structure, these are the kind of guiding principles we use to evaluate the rate structure. First of all, you want some revenue stability, and that's ensuring that there's some fixed charges to provide that stability. We want to make sure the structure is fair and equitable. We want to make sure that there's something built into the rate structure to have a rate water conservation, again, to ensure residential affordability on a go-forward basis, and finally, economic development. So looking at your rate structure and analyzing it, next slide, please, sorry, and analyzing it based on those guiding principles. First of all, you have a two-part rate structure, a fixed and volumetric, and again, that's kind of a leading practice. Most municipalities do have a two-part rate structure, and that supports revenue stability and fairness and equity with the volumetric rate being uniform. Inclining water rates supports water conservation. Anything over thirty-five cubic meters a month has an inclining rate, so again, that supports water conservation. The water residential rate supports conservation, and the non-residential rates actually support economic development. And you apply meter equivalencies for the fixed charges, and the meter equivalencies are based on Canadian Waterworks Association best practices in terms of the equivalent ratios that you're using for each size meter, so that supports fairness and equity. So we feel that the existing rate structure does support your, the guiding principles that I outlined, and so we're recommending no changes to the existing rate structure. Next slide, please. So what we did is show you the impacts of our recommendations, or the financial plan, rather, and this is based on a residential customer using two hundred cubic meters a year. So you can see, we talked about smoothing of the rates. We have a rate, we're recommending a rate increase of about three and a half percent a year. In the case of 2026, that works out to about fifty-four dollars a year, which is about four fifty a month. So the increases are smooth throughout the forecast period, and again, they're required to meet that infrastructure replacement needs and the increases in the operating budget. Next slide, please. So just to summarize, the financial plan has stable and predictable rate increases that balances affordability with future infrastructure needs, supports fair sharing in the distribution of resources between current supports fair sharing and the distribution of resources between current and future ratepayers. They, we have a capital reserve contribution that increases, provides a sustainable level of revenue to, to provide for future rehabilitation and replacement needs. There's positive reserve balances throughout the forecast period, maximizes financial flexibility, again, have positive reserve balances. And there's no debt actually required over the ten-year period in our plan, and maintains programs and services that meet environmental protection standards. So the theme of the financial plan is balancing today's affordability with tomorrow's infrastructure needs. That's the end of the presentation. And to answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, that overview. Do any members of committee have any questions or comments? Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. I just wanted further clarity on making sure that our water and wastewater asset management plan is completely separate from the rest of our asset management plan. I know that the water and wastewater rates are supposed to pay for the asset management of our water and wastewater resources and not the property taxes. So I just wanted to have that confirmed that in our asset management plan, that this billion dollars' worth of assets is separate, and the replacement of those assets is being funded entirely by the water and wastewater budget.
Thank you, Counselor Cruthers, Mr. Marshall.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The funding of the assets for water and wastewater are supported through our rates and not the tax levy. So in that instance, it is separate from the rest of the assets.
Thank you. So when we talk about three billion dollars in total assets, are we talking about non-water and wastewater, or is one, we have one billion in water and wastewater assets and then two billion in other assets? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The latter is correct.
Thank you.
Any other members? Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much. Through you, Acting Mayor Johns, to the presenter. You mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that your, your goal was to provide fair sharing in distribution of resources between current and future ratepayers. And then later in the report, you mentioned about fairness and equity and inclusiveness in the, in this whole study. So could you elaborate on how we provide a fair sharing of the distribution between current and future ratepayers? And what does that mean? Does it mean that the current ratepayers are, are not paying? I, I'm not quite sure. Maybe you could just clarify what we're considering when we're referring to future ratepayers while we're considering current ratepayers.
From, from BMA, if you could go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the, we're referring to intergenerational equity. And intergener- intergenerational equity, the, what it, what it does, it ensures that current ratepayers are paying their fair share of the replacement cost of infrastructure that they are consuming. So right now, like I said, if you look at the asset management plan, there's, there's an infrastructure gap. So current ratepayers are postponing those costs to future generations. And what we've done in this plan is to gradually increase those capital reserve contributions so future ratepayers aren't overly burdened.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Counselor Leahy?
Yes, thank you very much. And so in comparison to other municipalities, through you, Acting Mayor Johns, my question is with relation to the fact that you didn't identify the other municipalities because we're the second highest paying in terms of our water costs being extremely high in East Goulunberry, but we do not know the identities of the municipalities we're being compared to other than based on our, our density of population. So could you share a little bit more information about that comparative chart? And that, that might help us understand why East Goulunberry residents have the second highest rate?
Mr. Marshall.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Those municipalities that are in the comparison chart are municipalities in York region. So they're all York region municipalities.
Thank you.
Through you, Acting Mayor Johns, though, because, so my question is, how come we're the second highest rate, we have the second highest rate in York region, according to the chart, based on our, and we have, we don't have a very high population. So if we don't know the identities of the other municipalities, then, and I've brought this issue up before with other charts, it would be very helpful for us to know the identities of the other municipalities.
Mr. Marshall.
So speaking for Mr. Brizzi, there was a chart showing the density and showing the correlation between the lower dens- density representing higher costs. So if you have, if you have a broader base, or broader land area to put your infrastructure around and less people to pay for it, your costs are going to be higher. So I think that's what the chart is, is trying to say.
So through you, Acting Mayor Johns, my last question with regard to that chart is, for the sake of transparency, what is preventing East Goulunberry from sharing the identities of the other municipalities?
Mr. Marshall.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I think I explained this before when we had another chart. We don't want to put the other municipalities in a position where they're being, feeling like they're being put on the spot. We're focusing on what our municipality is and where we are, and focusing on our characteristics. So that's why we're not showing any of the other municipalities at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Acting Mayor Johns, I've, I've brought it up before, and I'd like to just, once and for all, hopefully clarify this point that I am, I'm not satisfied with the lack of transparency. My job as an elected representative for East Goulunberry is to serve the residents of East Goulunberry with transparency. And, and so it's not my job to be worried about embarrassing other municipalities or putting other municipalities on the spot in terms of if it might be uncomfortable if other municipalities have to be accountable for whether it's with the lowest average rate paying, rate, you know, percentage in York region, or whether it has to do with the water. And I would be very interested in knowing if the other municipalities follow the same procedure and, and redact the, redact East Goulunberry and all the other municipalities on their charts when they're doing their, their budgets and their water and wastewater.
So I believe the question was, do the other municipalities redact theirs? Is there any member of staff that wishes to take that? Seeing none, I will say personally, from what I've read, that other municipalities also don't do that. I will, I will suggest that, as, as was previously in, in your effort, if you do wish to enact change, then that would be done through a motion or an amendment to this. If that is successful, then that would be the direction. If it fails, then it would fail. So I'll leave that out there and allow opportunity to reflect on that. I do have a, I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's going to turn into two. So in doing my homework in advance of this meeting, and I was looking at other municipalities, and I saw ours sitting at the three and a half percent, which, which, great, it aligns with the, the long-term plan and delivers on what we need from a capital asset replacement plan. But then I noticed that some other municipalities around us were, were delivering double-digit percentage increases. And I couldn't get my head around the fact that if we have a financial plan that, that is delivering on kind of the longer-term goals and then the budget that gets passed that, that kind of feeds into that financial plan, is there something that I am missing that would cause other municipalities mid-plan to have to deliver a multiple, like a ten, twelve-digit percentage increase that, that, that we should be aware of when we're contemplating what, what percentages that we're delivering within our budget? Mr. Brizzi, I believe it is?
Right.
Is there something that we need to be aware of outside of like some individual act that would occur? That would cause that, that jump?
Through, through you, Chair. The, the, the main reason for that, and we've done a number of these studies across Ontario, the main reason for that is that there are other municipalities that have a significantly larger infrastructure gap than you currently are showing. And what they're doing is, is playing catch-up more so than yours. The, the fortunate situation that you're in is, the other fortunate situation is that your infrastructure is fairly new, and you've got some time to build your reserves over the next ten years to meet those requirements. Where in a lot of the other municipalities, the infrastructure replacement needs are a lot sooner. And because there wasn't foresight in previous years, they're requiring significant increases to meet the capital needs.
Great, thank you. So there's not, so taking this approach, in your experience, it's not a, a, a sudden event that would cause it to jump. So if taking this approach will deliver on the longer term for us?
That, that's correct.
Great, thank you, sir. Any other members of committee? So Counselor Leahy did have her hand up. I will go to other members of committee first, should they wish to have any questions or comments. And seeing none, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much. Through you, Acting Mayor Johns. So on another chart in the, in the presentation, it said that the infrastructure funding shortfall, and the source was 2024 East Goulunberry's Asset Management Plan, water is eight point nine million annually, a shortfall, and wastewater is seven point six million dollars annually, a funding shortfall. So my question is, how are we going to increase contributions without increasing taxes to meet that shortfall of approximately sixteen point three million dollars?
So the, Mr. Brizzi, did you want to speak to your financial overview that, that you presented?
Yes, the, the, there is a significant inf- annual infrastructure gap, and, and we're gradually building that. And like I just said previously, that you're fortunate that a lot of your infrastructure is fairly new, and a lot of your needs don't transpire until about tenth year. So our plan, and again, we're looking at rate payer affordability and what, what is reasonable as, in terms of an increase. Our plan is, we're showing ten years, but in fact, to meet the infrastructure requirements, you'd have to expand the financial plan another ten years. So it, it closes the gap in a, in a twenty-year period. But again, the reason for that is to ensure repair affordability.
Mr. Brizzi, I noticed that you continue to say rate payer as opposed to taxpayer. So like confirming again, the, the, the user charges on the water, it is the, the infrastructure inducement or funds, inducing funds into the reserve is coming from ratepayers as opposed to taxpayers. So there wouldn't be a, a tax increase. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, follow-up? Seeing none, we, there is a motion that has been documented here within our agendas. Take a moment for folks to pause if somebody would like to, to move that. Counselor Leahy, thank you very much. So Counselor Leahy has tabled the motion. I will, can I ask the clerk to put it on the screen, if, or the deputy clerk?
Question.
Yep, perfect. Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. The last line, I believe, is for same-day ratification to meet legislative deadlines. I'm just wondering what the legislative deadlines are that we're trying, that we need to meet.
Thank you, Counselor Cruthers. Mr. Marshall.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have to have this submitted by the end of the year in order to get our, submit for our water, municipal water taking licenses.
So why does it have to be done today if the deadline's the end of the year? Can we not ratify it in the first week in December?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would be pretty tight because we have to submit everything and then make sure that it's been accepted by the province, and if there's any back and forth.
Changes, okay, got it. Mr. Chair, normally, I, I like to have that sober second thought, but given that we have seen this previously and it was deferred to this meeting, I'm happy to go with same-day ratification. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor Leahy's motion still stands on the screen. Is there any further discussion around the motion as it's presented? I'll call the vote. All those in favor, motion carries. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brizzi. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That takes us to the second item under Finance, which is the Financial, Financial System Contract Award. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Marshall.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So this report is seeking approval to award the contract for, excuse me, implementation of a new financial system and a new tax and water billing system. Our current system was implemented in 2006, but it's now beyond its useful life, and it's time for a replacement. The project to do this was approved in the 2025 budget, and RFP was issued this year. We received ten submissions. Five were shortlisted, and demonstrations took place, and evaluations, and two passed technical evaluation. And the solution from M and P Digital was the highest ranking proposal and was the lowest cost. So we're recommending it toward at this time. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Members of committee. Counselor Roy DeClement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to staff. Is it normal for us to only receive two proposals that would meet the technical standards? It seemed, I seemed a little disappointed. We've got twenty-three registered. Normally, we get people who, who submit. We've got ten proposals, but only two of those met the technical standards. Is that normal?
So through you, Mr. Chair. Since this, the system that we're looking for has municipal tax and water, it's kind of a niche market. So there's not a lot of companies that satisfy that niche. So some of these applied, and they didn't, like, for example, some of them didn't have a water and tax billing system. So they didn't meet our technical qualifications, so we had to exclude them.
And if I may further, there are some eye-watering numbers here as far as annual costs. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for support and maintenance, but it looks like an average of about a hundred and fifty thousand for just the licensing. Is that, is that an industry standard? Is that what other municipalities are paying for the systems like this? This, like I said, it seems a little steep. So I had some sticker shock.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So back in 2024, we actually went out and got a request for information. So we had people come in to show us their system and give us some ballpark numbers. This is actually around the mid to lower end of the ballpark numbers. One of the municipalities in York region has just implemented a system, and they've indicated annual licenses of twice the amount that this is proposing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yep, Counselor Cruthers, and then Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to Mr. Marshall. This has given me flashbacks of a previous life when we were implementing the systems that, in the insurance industry. It's, I'm sure it's, there's only so many people that play in this, in this, this market. And, and the price, the prices are stupid high because they can be. It's good to hear that this is on the lower end, though. I appreciate that. The, the, the previous provider that we have, are, are they no longer keeping pace with, you know, progress in, in technology? Are they getting out of the business? Why do we? It's, it's some, I know it can sometimes be very daunting to leave one platform for another. So help me understand a bit about why the change.
So through you, Mr. Chair. The platform we're using right now, like I mentioned before, is 2006.
Yeah.
So they haven't kept as much up to date with the improvements and enhancements. And now there's new technology that, that is now in the market that exceeds us. They have another platform that they have offered, and they were, they submitted a bit as well. But one, there, our experience with them is not the greatest. And two, it's an American firm, so they're not used an American firm, so they're not used to the Canadian market as well, especially municipal side. So some of their offerings didn't meet the target as much as the ones that we had here.
And is this a Canadian firm?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes.
Well, that's even better news. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Marshall, have we, have you had references from other municipalities locally that are using this, and are you satisfied with what you heard back?
So through you, Mr. Chair. As part of the RFP process, each applicant had to submit three references, and we checked those out, and they were pretty good, so.
Okay. And my last question, Mr. Chair, will this new software, will it translate into an improved customer experience for EG taxpayers?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's part of the reason we've moved to this platform is for a better customer experience.
Transitioning from MS-DOS. C colon backslash. Okay, Counselor Cruthers.
Thank you. I know we've been working on this for a number of years. I couldn't find in the report, maybe it's there and I'm missing it, where the budget amount is and how this compares to the budget amount.
So through you, Mr. Chair, the capital budget that was approved for this project was $1.5 million.
This is coming well within budget?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions, comments from committee? Okay, seeing none, I would need a mover, and if the clerk, thank you. So Counselor Crone has moved it. If we can just put it on the screen so everybody knows what we're talking about? So Counselor Crone has moved this motion. And I am just reading it. Okay, Counselor Crone's moved it. Any further discussion after folks have reviewed it? All those in favor? Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Mr. Marshall, do you have anything else under Finance?
Through you, Mr. Chair, nothing at this time.
Members of committee? For Mr. Marshall? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Marshall. And thank you to the team, too, as well. Okay, that takes us to item I on the agenda, which is Development Services, and Counselor Roy DiClemente is in the chair. Counselor Roy DiClemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two prepared items on our agenda for this afternoon. The first is Development Services Planning Branch Report DS 2025-33, which is, which references a proposed official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment regarding 31 Sand Road. We do have a motion in front of us. Mr. Krubnik, would you like to add anything further to your memorandum or to your report?
Thank you very much, Counselor. Through you, Madam Chair. I am certainly open to going through certain items of it, but I will leave it to council if they have certain questions of me, and I could take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. So may I have a mover, please? Counselor Foster. So I have a motion on the table. Any questions? Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, thank staff for putting this together on such short notice. You can see by the length of the report, a lot of work has gone into this, and getting it on the table before us, before the 120-day window closes for appeal on non-decision, was important to the community, and I appreciate you doing that. I also want to thank the residents who respectfully let us know their objections to this proposal and voiced them very eloquently and helped us to get to where we are today. Madam Chair, I just want to ask that we add a same-day ratification to this, knowing that the window for appeal on non-decision is closing.
Counselor Foster, it's your motion. Are you okay with that? All right. Madam Clerk, you've noted that Counselor Foster is agreeable to that friendly amendment. You'll add that to the resolution?
Yes.
Please, and thank you. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. So the last part of it states that council authorized the town solicitor and town staff to take any necessary steps to implement the town council, to implement town council's decision. So I'm wondering if you could provide a little bit more elaboration on exactly what that might entail with regarding to taking any necessary steps? And my second part of my question is with regard to a point that was raised by a deputation earlier in the meeting, and that's with regard to the question of if the town has or is planning to approach a minister to pursue a possibility of having that designated as a heritage property.
Mr. Krubnik, there's a two-part question. One is, can you clarify the, what next steps you're going to be taking to implement this decision?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, Counselor, recommendation, I believe it is, recommendation three before council simply is, you know, related to a notice that may come out of this meeting. So whatever decision of council might be today, we do have to provide notice to the applicant and potentially to the residents who were also initially notified of the public meeting. So that is what that references. With regards to your second question, I believe about taking this forward to the minister, I believe that reference was related to a certain component of the Ontario Heritage Act, which really also allows any member of the community to come forward to the minister with information they have in hand as well, related to that, related to any property they may have, be, have of a concern with. I will say, at this point, we would also have to move forward with, if we move forward through that avenue, we would need information or more information than what we have related to that, to that part, to that property. So we do need information to move forward on that, Counselor.
Further?
Yes, one follow-up question through you, Madam Chair. So just for clarification, that there is the possibility for the town solicitor and town staff, and when they are taking any necessary steps, to pursue approaching the Minister of Heritage after more information has been collected? Is that what you are saying?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, I believe we would, we would require the information. Typically, that information is through a heritage impact assessment, so that we know the value of the property in question that we're bringing forward. I believe we also need to consult with or reach out to the Heritage Trust. So those are itemized actions that I would, I will seek further clarification on. I do have some of those responses, Counselor, they're just not in front of me presently. Someone else may have them here as well, but to the best of my recollection, we, most importantly, we do need information related to the property.
Thank you very much. So just, I have, it's for the final clarification of this, because my question is a procedural one. We have, we have a statement here that we're going to vote on and ratify later today, if things proceed, that council authorized the town solicitor and town staff to take any necessary steps to implement the town council's decision. Does town council need to direct staff to pursue communication with the Minister of Heritage to see if the minister will, will support that? Does town council, what are, what are any specific steps that town council needs to take in order for towns, our town solicitor and town staff to take further steps?
Counselor, I under, as my understanding, that, that staff will be issuing a notice of refusal should this motion be adopted by council, by council later this evening. As far as the heritage piece, Mr. Valčić, can you confirm that our staff are in constant regular contact with the MPP's office on any number of issues that are related to municipal matters?
Madam Chair, yes, is the answer. I also just wanted to pick up on what Mr. Krubnik had said here. In order to approach the province to suggest that the related sections that have been referenced be actioned, it would typically be done with some sort of supporting information. So what I'm unclear of is, I know we've had members of the community that have been quite adamant about the heritage value. Perhaps they have information they can share with us that would be helpful in that regard. And then, second to that, the heritage impact assessment, which is currently being conducted, would help inform such a request, would be my opinion.
And you've also advised that when that heritage impact assessment is, is provided to the town, town staff are going to have it peer-reviewed as well. So there, there will be two qualified people who will review that material.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Partially. I'm still.
Okay, so I have someone else who also wanted to speak, so if you have another question, go ahead.
I'll, I'll let the other, no, I'll let the other councils speak first, and then I'll see if my question is answered in their questions.
Counselor Johns, I saw your microphone came down.
Thanks. So we just caught up with that, that follow-up conversation about the heritage impact assessment study. Do we, part one, do we know when we're expecting to get, to receive that back?
Mr. Krubnik?
Through you, Madam Chair. We certainly have been awaiting that heritage impact assessment to date. We have not received it. I think for several weeks now, we've been told it's, it's almost there. We just don't have it before us now, at the date of this recommendation report to council.
Do we have a date when we were going to receive it?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't have a date.
Thank you. So the second part, the second.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make it clear. It's not that we don't have a date because we're sort of just sitting idly. We don't have a date because we've asked for it to be done as soon as possible and to bring it to our attention, and it's not been brought to us yet, to be clear.
Thank you.
Okay, so on, based on that comment, so just as a, if I could have a follow-up, the, is there a typical timeline, and would we give a deadline, or do we yield and, and kind of wait? Like, what would be the standard procedure, through you, Madam Chair?
I think it's a bit of an unusual situation, isn't it, Mr. Krubnik?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, heritage impact assessment can take, you know, any, can take a number of months to complete, so whether that's two or three or four. So I've seen them be submitted within a couple of months. I've seen them take much longer than that, so, and there's no specific date, through you, Madam Chair, Counselor, that we would have, you know, had a cutoff on, because this is already an application that was deemed complete. The HIA was not part of that. At this point, though, the applicant was working with us to, to provide us with an HIA. So, again, it was requested by us, we were, and they, and that's, that was the kind of, essentially, the next step would be to provide that to staff.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, so the, the second part to my question is, so based on that occurring, what, what other studies were part of the application are currently being undertaken that we are currently waiting on from the applicant?
Mr. Krubnik?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have everything else that we've received from the applicant. We did make, through our Q and A's, the public aware that there is still a stage-three archaeological that needs to take place on site. That stage-three archaeological was outside of the development boundary that was proposed in the application. So I don't think that is something that perhaps, is something that we are maybe waiting on, but certainly something we are anticipating still to come.
Sorry, so in follow-up, is it, is it, is it an expectation to be a deliverable of an, the arc, the phase-three archaeology study as part of the submission?
Through you, Madam Chair. It was not a requirement of the submission, it was a requirement of the findings of the report. So the heritage impact, sorry, the archaeological assessment was submitted as part of the application, and the report spoke to a stage-three being necessary, so that is something that we anticipate still happening in the future.
Okay, so just in summary, so we are, it is an expectation based on the previous work to have the phase-three archaeology study, and we have received, how many, how many reports need to be submitted?
Through you, Madam Chair, it does vary. We have a pre-application checklist that we issue to an applicant, and, you know, it can be five studies or 10 studies, or it can be 20 studies, Counselor. So I believe, in this case as well, the report identifies that the, identifies the studies that were submitted for this specific application.
Yeah, they are listed in the report, Counselor.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. And so my point was, is that, so we have received everything, but we have not received the heritage assessment, nor have we received the archaeology phase-three study. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Crone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank staff for this report and coming to the conclusion that they did. I also want to thank all the residents that shared their input on this. It's, it's been a, I've never seen such community engagement in my career, which is a good thing. I also think it's, it's important to thank the ward counselors for their leadership, Counselor Cruthers and Foster. I've had a contentious issue in my own ward my first term, and I know how challenging it can be dealing with passionate individuals, and everyone's very, you know, engaged and involved and invested, so I know it wasn't easy. I just wanted, for, for clarity, for, for everyone here in the chamber and for folks watching at home, the, the report recommends the refusal of this application, so that when we vote in favor, that means we are supporting the staff's recommendation of refusal. We're not saying we, we want the application, we're, we're voting. So I just want to be very clear, so no one decides to lynch us if we, they think we're voting the wrong way. But voting in favor, it means we're voting to refuse the application. That's all I wanted to say, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'm just going to ask the clerk to put the motion on the screen so I can read aloud and make sure that we're clear about what we're voting on. Okay, so moved by Counselor Foster. Be it resolved the Development Services Planning Branch Report DS 2025-33 dated November 18th, 2025, entitled Proposed Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 31 Sand Road, file OPA 2503 and ZBA 2512 be received, and that council refuse the applications for the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment in their current form, respecting the lands municipally known as 31 Sand Road for the reasons set out in Report DS 2025-33, and that council authorize the town solicitor and town staff to take any necessary steps to implement town council's decision, and that the recommendations of Report DS 2025-33 be ratified at the November 18th, 2025 council meeting, that is, today at 6:00 p.m. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is Development Services Planning Branch Report DS 2025-34, the Revised Draft Built Heritage Strategy. I note that Counselor Johns has declared an interest in this and will not be participating. You've made that note, Madam Clerk? Okay, so we have several resolutions in front of us. Mr. Krubnik, do you have anything further to add?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I'm here to answer questions of council, certainly to, so we can move forward with this important initiative. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone like to put this on the floor with a motion? Counselor Foster, did you want to move it? Okay, so Counselor Foster's moving this one as well. Members of committee, any questions or comments? Counselor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to find the, the exact page and the exact number in the report. There were a couple of items that I wish to discuss, so let's see. So, let's see here, I'm just pulling them up, so I can give you the exact strategic tactic number, et cetera. So, my concern is with item number 1.3, and the action is that the town will continue to support, well, okay, that's a different one, okay. The, will pursue, let's see here, the town, there's a lot of, it's a very lengthy report, there's a lot of strategic suggestions here, so, and there are lots of implications for the residents that they should be aware of, that they continue to work with residents, and so that, but my concern is that, with regard to the strategy, of the town will consider strategic purchases of heritage properties by applicants, based on a thorough evaluation for inclusion in the town civic precinct. And so staff are to advise, identify and advise council of opportunities to purchase heritage properties deemed to be intrinsic in the heritage value to the town, and that support heritage conservation. So what fund is this money going to come from, that would potentially support the town strategically purchasing heritage properties? And should we, in fact, be in the business of purchasing heritage properties as a town?
Mr. Kupnik, did you want to try and tackle that one?
Through you, Madam Chair, certainly, I think I would leave it to council to say if, whether or not we are in the business of purchasing those properties. And certainly, at this point in time, I do not have, unfortunately councillor, a budget or a place where to draw those funds from. The intention is that, this is in fact, I believe, a long-term outlook for the heritage strategy, meaning post-next term of council, so we're looking essentially five years along our route. So, at that, at that point in time as well, there would be, when the strategy does come forward, five years from now, there would be a plan developed around it, to work with staff, work with members of council, to identify resources that are felt by all that are important or critical, and then a decision would be made by council at that point.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, my next question is with regard to strategy number 2.4, promote the work and initiatives of the town's Heritage Advisory Committee through annual council updates. And the output from that is communications and promotion of the town's Heritage Advisory Committee. I have a concern about that, the performance measures, and their past performance, we are currently, in the, at the last, at the last meeting, it was brought to our attention that there were a number of meetings where, that did not happen, because quorum was not met, and that the minutes for more than a year had not been submitted until the end of October. And so I have questions about the qualifications of the members of the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Councillor, councillor, that's not the intent of this discussion today. This is, this is a strategy that has been in development for years. We have had one-on-one opportunities to speak with the consultants, we've had this before us on a number of occasions, questioning whether our Heritage Advisory Committee is doing the job that you would like them to do is not the matter that's before us today. So if you have questions about the strategy...
I respectfully, I respectfully disagree, however...
Why haven't they been raised until now, then?
I have raised them multiple times with multiple individuals, so. The issue at hand is, if we are going to put effort and time and money potentially into promoting the work and initiatives of the town's Heritage Advisory Committee, I would like to be receiving some updates and communications from that committee. We have a planner, a consultant whom I've spoken with and shared concerns with, but why are we promoting a committee where there are concerns about that? So that's why I'm bringing up that strategy point with regard to this particular policy. And my last point...
Members of committee, oh, you have one more question?
I do, indeed.
Okay, one more, please.
This is our opportunity at committee of the whole, this is why we should be asking questions about this. So my question is with regard to the training that is proposed in this policy, to be provided to the Heritage Advisory Committee, and the information that, during the public information session, which I attended, they said that there would be, they had attended a Heritage Advisory Committee to provide training. And so my request would be that if the, if this consultant is providing training to the volunteers on the Heritage Advisory Committee, that we as councillors also receive the same opportunity to receive training on heritage matters. That is what my request is. So I would like to make a friendly amendment, that all, all opportunities that are provided to volunteers are also provided to elected officials serving as council members.
Members of committee, any other questions or comments? Councillor Carruthers, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the recommendations is that council direct staff to include a capital budget request within the 2026 budget to fund resources to pursue and implement the near-term built heritage strategies. There's not a dollar value on that, and I wouldn't be in favor of directing staff to spend a blank check, so I'm wondering what sort of dollars we're talking about, and why it's not already in the budget, given that the budget has been before us for a number of months.
And that this project has been underway for a number of months as well. Mr. Valticich?
Madam Chair, in discussions with the, with the acting general manager in relation to this report, we've had discussions about, now that it's before you, what are some of the specific near-term initiatives that are required? And notably, I would point to 1.1, because the time is ticking, and the clock is going to run out on our ability to do what we think is most important, which is identify those top priority properties that warrant pursuit of designation. So we still have time to put a more informed capital project sheet in front of you for your next couple of days of budget deliberations, and have committee and council, budget committee, determine if you'd like to propose amendments to the proposed budget that would allow us to go forward and pursue some of these aggressively, particularly the ones in green. So, would I have liked it if they were in, before you prior to now? Yeah, I would have, but it's before you today, and, and we hope that you can be supportive of that.
Councillor Foster?
Just to indicate that the Heritage Advisory Committee has been pushing for some time to start the process, to get those properties looked after. We are simply running out of time. If there's going to be a budget, it better happen soon, and I would certainly support that, for sure.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Crone, do you have anything to, okay, councillor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like clarification on the point here, where it says we're directing the staff to include a budget capital request within the 2026 budget, so, and the, and the next recommendation is also that the council meeting be ratified today, to allow the budget request to be considered within the 2026 business plan and budget deliberations. So if we vote in favor of this now, today, how does that affect the budget voting that we're actually doing at, at the end of the budget process?
Mr. Valticich?
Madam Chair, all you would be doing today is requesting that staff bring a capital proposal forward for your consideration, that you would determine whether you wish to make, propose as an amendment to the tabled budget. The other option, because when I was reviewing this with Mr. Kupnik, I said, if we don't do it now, then we have to come back to council early in the new year with almost like an in-year capital request, which, to councillor Carruthers' point, my strong preference would have been that this would already be in the budget, in the 2025 budget, it's not. And so, identifying that, as we went through this process and reviewing this report, we'd like to bring something forward to you, for you to consider as a proposed amendment to the 2026 tabled budget, and specifically what we want to work on are the most at-risk items, that if we don't deal with them before the end of 2026, time runs out. That's my concern at this point in time.
Councillor Leahy, sorry, councillor Carruthers.
Thank you, and I just wanted to confirm that the resolution says a capital budget request, so this would not impact the tax rate, correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct. This is a, this is a project budget that would allow us to pursue those high priority items identified in this strategy, and then beyond that, other elements of this could have budget implications, but they would be considered as part of future operating budget discussions.
And I will also, I'll also point out that the second resolution is that we direct staff to continue with refining the strategy, and return to a committee of the whole with a recommendation for this. So this is just a next step, the next iteration? Councillor Crone, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a follow-up.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Like I say every time this comes before us, I believe that in our built heritage strategy, we need to specifically identify that there's more cultural heritage than just built heritage, and I'm happy to see in the analysis, the quote from our 2010 official plan that talks about heritage resources may include structures, sites, environments, artifacts, traditions, which have historical, architectural, archaeological, cultural or contextual value or significance. So I would, I just reiterate again, I don't want to see the strategy come forward without that in it. It's very important, because we have so many resources that are not just houses. Thank you.
Councillor Crone, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, for clarity, just wanting to make sure that, other than councillor Carruthers' suggestion that we define that it's from the capital budget, do we need to make any further, give any further direction in this, so that it be handled as a amendment to the, to the mayor's budget? Is there any other verbiage we need to, because I, you're also asking that we, I think that we handle this, ratify it tonight, so.
Mr. Valticich, should we be refining that fourth clause to say that, that direct staff to include a capital budget request for an amendment to the proposed budget as tabled?
Madam Chair, we understand that to be the case, but if, if you wish for the resolution to have some extra clarity, you could certainly write it that way, but as staff, I can assure you that is the intent, that is the manner in which we would bring it forward to you. Because at this point, quite frankly, the only option you have as a budget committee is to make amendments, so we saw that as sort of inherently, sort of, not obvious, but that was the only means, but if you want to clarify that, that's fine, too.
Councillor Crone?
I'm, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure you were good with that on staff, so. If staff is fine, I'm fine.
Councillor Foster, this is your motion, are you comfortable?
I don't think it would hurt to be added in there that this is an amendment. Madam Clerk, if you can make that work for us.
Can you word smart this for us, please, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Chair, just bear with us for a moment. It wouldn't hurt to re-clarify the exact wording that you would like included, we can certainly capture that.
So, the third clause would read that council direct staff to include a capital budget request for an amendment to the proposed budget as tabled, to fund resources to pursue implementation of the near term. Okay, and then when it comes time for us, we'll, we'll want that on the screen, just in case. Councillor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, I'm going back to the friendly amendment which I proposed earlier, but I would like to further enhance it, I would like to make a friendly amendment, because we're now talking about potential budget implications. In the request from the Heritage Advisory Committee this year, they are asking for more than they did last year, they're asking for $2,500 to support their attendance at a heritage conference. And again, I would like to emphasize that if there's any funding and budget being put forward for volunteers to attend an Ontario Heritage Conference, that I would like there to be written in, that all educational opportunities be extended to council members as well, because my understanding is that we don't have someone on staff who is a heritage expert. And so, I would like to make a friendly amendment, that the same budget...
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes?
It's not a friendly amendment when it is different than the rest of the motion. A friendly amendment is adding something very simple, that doesn't change the rest of it, but this is a standalone amendment, so if councillor Leahy would like to put her standalone amendment on, we can vote on that. Thank you.
And it's also, I also would suggest that it has nothing to do with the matter before us, it has something to do with budget committee tomorrow, so if councillor Leahy, if you'd like to raise it then, I think that's more appropriate. Councillor Foster, this is your motion, are you happy with it as it stands?
I think so.
Okay. Any further questions? Your microphone is on, councillor Leahy, could you turn that off, please? Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, can you put the resolution on the screen for us? So, we're going to be receiving the report that, and then further, that council direct staff to continue with refinements to the draft built heritage strategy as outlined in Appendix 1 of the report, and to return to committee of the whole council with a recommendation report for the built heritage strategy, and that council direct staff to include a capital budget request for an amendment to the proposed budget as tabled, to fund resources to pursue implementation of the near-term strategies, and that the recommendations of the report be ratified at the November 18th, 2025 council meeting, to allow the budget request to be considered within the 2026 business plan and budget deliberations. All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Kupnik, you've had a busy couple of weeks and months, do you have anything further to add at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for acknowledging that the work, it is, there is a lot, but it means that we're, we're busy and accomplishing a lot, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. And I did also want to acknowledge Mr. Dow, who's in the audience today, he, he was also, I think he was assigned the big file in capitals, so I just wanted to acknowledge his efforts as well. I know it takes, there was a whole team associated with it, but I did, I just wanted to take that time to acknowledge the planner on the file as well. Members of committee, anything further to raise at this time? Seeing nothing, I'll turn the chair back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Takes us to item J, which is Parks, Recreation and Culture, and we have councillor Crone in the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we have two items on the agenda. First one is the Joint Parks, Recreation and Culture and Corporate Services Presentation, Health and Active Living Plaza Grand Opening Update. Mr. Carmison, are you taking care of this? Over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's staff have provided a memorandum and a presentation related to the successful opening of the Health and Active Living Plaza. The grand opening program has exceeded our expectations as staff. Over the course of three days, the town welcomed over 10,000 residents and visitors to the opening of the Health and Active Living Plaza. Joining us today are the co-chairs, directors, Rhonda Wilson and Bethany Lee, who led the grand opening committee to provide a presentation that highlights the grand opening program for the Health and Active Living Plaza.
There we go, sorry. Thank you. Good afternoon, Acting Mayor Johns, council, town staff and community members. Today I'm joined here with Bethany Lee, and together we co-led the Help Grand Opening Event Team, with an incredible group of dedicated town staff from many of the departments. Next slide, please. Today we will be recapping the Help Grand Opening Event, highlighting some successes, doing some shout-outs and thank-yous, and share with you what's next. Next slide, please. Let's set the stage with an incredible video that's been arranged by communications. I think this video really showcases the work and passion that went into the grand opening, and how successful it was. We hope you enjoy.
Three, two, one.
Great, thank you. Yes, thank you. It's a fantastic video. We can go to the next slide, please. So we're going to give some thanks now at this time. So we'd like to start off by extending our gratitude to the Queensville Builder Group. They were our grand opening program sponsors. Their generous support helped us enhance the event experience and offer a wide range of activities to our community. Their investment in this celebration reflects a shared commitment to building a vibrant, active and connected East Goulunbury. Their sponsorship was celebrated across all platforms to visibly share recognition of their given support and recognize them with residents as community builders. Thank you, Queensville Builder Group, for helping us make this milestone moment truly special for our residents. Next slide. We want to extend our sincere appreciation to our community partners. Their support, collaboration and shared commitment to enhancing the quality of life in East Goulunbury played a vital role in the success of the Help grand opening. Whether through sponsorship, program, support, or helping us connect with residents, each contribution helped bring this celebration to life. Next slide. Okay, this is where I get a little emotional. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to our dedicated EG staff and our engaged EG volunteers. Their enthusiasm, professionalism and hard work made this event seamless from start to finish. We truly couldn't have it, have done it without you. I also would like to take a moment to thank our incredible Parks and Recreation Culture Department. Special recognition goes to General Manager Erin Carmison, the Director of Parks, Frank Mazada, Director of Municipal Facilities, Greg Bagley, and our Project Manager, Justin Tucker, and all of their teams. Your guidance and commitment has been instrumental every step of the way. And then to the entire Recreation Events Team who's listening back at the Help right now. This project has been years in the making, and countless hours, energy and years, even emotional sweat and tears, have not gone unnoticed. I'm deeply grateful for your unwavering effort and pride in making the Help a reality to our community. Next slide. So that's our entire team that helped with the grand opening. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you to the East Goulunbury Public Library staff and volunteers. Their commitment to enriching the event with creative activities, learning opportunities and community engagement added tremendous value. We would like to thank Sandra Sador, Library CEO, and her amazing team for being incredible partners at the Help and for showcasing the library as an essential part of the new community hub. Next slide. And thank you to mayor and council. Your continued leadership, your vision and support, your commitment to investing in recreation, community engagement and resident well-being made the Help facility possible. Your presence at the grand opening and throughout the planning process reflects the strong partnership between council and staff in building exceptional community spaces. So thank you. Next slide. The Help grand opening offered a wide range of activities designed to welcome residents and showcase all the Help has to offer. Families enjoy drop-in recreation programs, swimming and gymnasium opportunities, guided facility tours, fitness demonstrations, arts and culture activities, and interactive experiences led by the community partners. The goal was to highlight the diversity of programming available and create an inclusive celebratory atmosphere for all ages. Now I'd like to welcome Bethany to say.
Thanks, Rhonda. I'll now take us through the promotions, if we can go to the next slide. The promotion of the opening events and the way the team contributed together to create such a successful opening weekend and move into operations. You'll see there on the screen our event lineup. You probably recall this already. It's just a few weeks ago. This helped us welcome thousands of residents into the Help. We strategically planned for months on what could be achieved over those opening days to give a taste and experience across all of the services. And how could we hype up the community and get them inside? Because we knew, once we did, we would have patrons for life. Behind each of these events were many team members, as Rhonda mentioned, working to be part of the opening event committee to execute our event seamlessly and introduce these new programs and the use of this new public space. I'd like to take a moment to thank that grand opening committee team, as Rhonda did as well, from across our teams. It really was a team effort. We met on a regular basis, planned the events, looked at risks and contingency plans, reviewed safety plans, and did drills and worked really very collaboratively to achieve something great. While Rhonda and I are here today, as Rhonda mentioned, there's many people sort of back home and in the audience today that we would like to thank. Next slide, please. And as Rhonda mentioned, we had a fantastic partnership with the East Goulunbury Public Library, or EGPL. The grand opening committee very much benefited from their expertise at the committee table, their dedication to cohesive communications. We were lockstep every step of the way, and the true joy and excitement that they brought. In addition to thanking Sandra, we would also like to thank Christine Glenn, Board Chair, and the EGPL team members for their contributions. Next slide, please. So how do we measure success? Success was measured through the attendance, of course, participant sign-ups for programs, feedback and engagement across all of the programmed activities. More than 10,000 visitors attended the Help over three days of the community programming. I'd like to thank the customer service team. These visitors came en masse. Many of them visited the customer service desk, and you greeted them with smiles, information, learned on the fly, and fed information back to the team with questions in order to serve the community. So a hearty congratulations and thank you to Heather Shirk and the customer service team, who have now operationalized our third customer service desk in EG. At the Help grand opening, we saw a strong turnout from families, youth, adults, seniors, reflecting broad community interests and interest in the facility. Memberships grew by almost 1,000 during that opening, and that meant approximately $80,000 in membership sales. And since the opening, that membership number, I believe, has almost doubled or probably doubled by now. The high level of participation, positive interactions and early demand for programs demonstrate that Help is quickly becoming a valued community destination. Next slide, please. I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't know. So how do we get these results? It's my pleasure always to talk about communications, and I'll speak just quickly to the strategic communication planning we undertook over a period of about a year. We developed the comprehensive communication plan in phases. You'll see those listed there on your screen. We worked on engaging the community. Making personal connections was also included recruitment for the many people who work at the Help right now, talking to staff and creating videos. We got to Phase Three, which was about let's get ready. We started telling people when it was going to open and what to expect and building up that buzz. And of course, now we are in Phase Four, which is continuing the showcase of the beautiful facility, talking about the programs you can take there and getting ready for winter registration. Over this phased, overall, the phased intentional approach connected with residents, built interest and culminated in a strong, inclusive opening. You'll see a few of the communication team members here who I'd like to thank, Ryan Bremner, Sarah LaBelle, Aprijeda Baru, and along with, of course, Rachel Thompson, who was not in the photo there, but who was in the role of officer during the strategic comms planning process. They were responsible for over 25 streams of various tools and tactics, including digital, road signs, handouts, physical signage in our facility's screens and videos, and we thank them gratefully. Next slide, please. Just a final few highlights before I turn back to Rhonda. The Help Are You Ready video released just days before the opening weekend received over 23,000 views across our platforms. These are incredible numbers. They're, we're very proud. Over 70% of these views were from accounts we looked into that didn't previously follow the town. So we engaged some new folks and let them know about what's happening in EG. The previous videos from Phases One and Two have over 56,000 views, which if you culminate on Facebook as six days of watch time, it's pretty incredible. And finally, sort of from a big picture, during, from our Phase One to Phase Four, we gained over 3,300 new followers across our platforms. Of course, we're promoting all the time, different reasons to follow us, but we can also attribute some of our Help promotions to these new followers. That's it for me. Thank you very much, and back to Rhonda. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Bethany. So the celebration and the party may be over, but the real work is just beginning. Our focus now turns to expanding programs that reflect the needs and interests of our community, growing our team of staff and volunteers, and building new partnerships and sponsorships to enhance everything the Help has to offer. Most importantly, we'll continue fostering connections, pride and a sense of belonging across East Goulunbury, making sure that this facility isn't just a place to visit, but a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Much appreciated. Can I have a member of committee move receipt of this report? Counselor Foster? Are there any questions for staff? Counselor Foster?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but just, I don't think I saw a person that walked into the facility without saying wow. So I think that a big thank you is in order for everyone, and I think I can probably speak for all of us here, and I can certainly speak for people in the community. I've made a little deal with myself that I'm not going to drive by the place without stopping in. So I've been in a number of times since the opening. Every time, I've been amazed at the amount of people that have been in the pool and in the building. You know, nine o'clock on a Saturday morning and there's like 42 people in the pool, I think that's pretty successful moving forward. And I think that's only going to grow. So again, thank you. I think the whole thing is fabulous and our community loves it. Thanks.
Counselor Cruthers?
Thank you. I echo what my colleague Counselor Foster has said. And I also wanted to let people know that we had our youth advisory committee last night, and the amount of youth going in to the building is really incredible. And the youth committee has been struggling to have these teen nights and trying to get people to come out. And with the new Healthy Active Living Plaza, we're able to get a group of teens every single Friday night. So we're connecting with the youth and it's absolutely wonderful. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Counselor Crone. I just want to say, first-term counselor, this wasn't, I wasn't a part of driving the vision, and I think that we need to wholly acknowledge the decisions of previous councils for their leadership in delivering such an incredible facility to our community. Our community was starving for these services and amenities. And it was a privilege for me to be a small part of helping to move that forward. And so thank you to previous councils, and thank you to our incredible staff, because, you know, whether it is, whether it is Help or any of our other facilities, it is so abundantly clear that the wild success of our programming and services within the Parks Recreation and Culture Department is, it's the staff that are the heartbeat of delivering such excellence. And it's, it's top to bottom. And you can see it in the folks that are emptying the garbages, and you can see it in the folks wearing their suit jackets. So thank you sincerely. You can see what makes East Goulunbury different from other municipalities. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just add my, my thanks. I was so proud of what we were able to achieve as a town. And I echo the comments about, you know, I've been here for half of the journey. And, you know, I thought it was a nice touch on the opening night when we invited members of previous councils to come and cut the ribbon because they were part of it as well, because it goes back to, what, 2009, I think. That was, and we were under, it was a different mayor back then, different council, and it was nice, it was classy to have them, everyone there. So thank you very much to staff. We have the motion on the floor to receive. All those in favor, and that is carried. Next, next item on the agenda is-
May I say something?
I know it's, it's not part of the plan. I've lived here for 52 years, and it's about time that we did have something. I honestly did not know-
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Okay, so, next item on the agenda is the Joint Parks, Recreation and Culture and Finance Memo, Health and Active Living Plaza Facility Completion and Budget Update. Who, Mr. Carmison, are you taking care of this as well? Over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff have prepared a joint memorandum with finance for council providing an update on the finances for the Health and Active Living Plaza project as a whole, in particular with the completion of the facility construction. Staff will provide a further report back at the completion of the park and the entire project as a whole anticipated for Q2 to Q3 of 2026. I'd like to highlight the following in the memorandum. The construction of the facility was significantly under the council-approved budget by approximately $12 million, a total of $8 million under the total project budget as a whole. Staff estimate the present-day value of the land conveyed to the town for the Health and Active Living Plaza facility site, Event Street, at approximately $24 million in $2,025 value. The land conveyance to the town was part of the development planning process with no cost to the taxpayer. Lastly, there was benefit to council staying their course and awarding the construction project when they did. Compared to construction values of like-kind and quality construction of multi-use recreational spaces in southern Ontario indicates an increase of construction costs per square foot of up to 70% post-construction contract award and during the time of construction for the Health and Active Living Plaza facility. I'd like to thank my colleagues in finance, in particular General Manager Marshall, Director Carolyn Brown, and Director Valerie Adema for their collective efforts towards the financial strategy and their financial guidance throughout the project. I'd also like to thank the work of Justin Tucker, Project Manager, for his commitment and dedication to the project in particular over the last two years during intensive and ongoing construction. Staff are available to answer any questions that council may have related to the memo.
Thank you, Mr. Carmison. Could I have a mover for this report, please? Counselor Lahey? Any questions? Leahy? Any questions? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. My question is with regard to overall. The overall costs were $102 million and change. And part of the costs were furniture, fixtures and equipment. And so does that include the book purchases for the library and the furniture in the library?
Mr. Carmison?
Three, Mr. Chair, absolutely. And that includes the entire furniture, fixtures and equipment schedule for the entire building, including the library.
Thank you very much. And my last question is a clarification and/or confirmation with regard to the DCs. Because we talk about the, the amount in a dollar figure, $102 million, $376,132. And have, has 100% of the DCs that the town received for Help, are there any outstanding DCs or have they all been received and paid for, for the Help?
Mr. Carmison or Mr. Marshall? Who wants to, Mr. Marshall?
Through Mr. Chair. I believe you'd referred this question before and the response was that all costs that have been incurred have been paid. So there's nothing outstanding at this time.
Thank you very much for that clarification. What a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Johns?
I wasn't going to say anything, but, but I'm not going to let it go. Like this is a, I don't know anybody looking at this who can say that this isn't a wild success. Like these decisions through COVID, coming out of COVID, like the numbers that you just reported that are being under budget. Like I don't know what that is a percentage, but that would be a very cool thing to figure out what that under budget percentage is. And then the fact that the value of the asset for the balance sheet of the municipality, like what a great investment. Like it is a great, it is a great investment on the books financially. It is a great investment as a community asset for folks. Like I, this is just a wild success. And so as I said, thank you to folks operating before. Mr. Carmison and Mr. Marshall and CIO, you, congratulations because I'm proud sitting here. I think the community should be proud of what you delivered in the way that you did. So congratulations.
Okay. Counselor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you. I have refrained from speaking because I think I would get very emotional. I'm literally tearing up right now. So I just wanted to acknowledge the vision that, as, as Counselor Johns said, the vision that prior councils had to continue when we weren't even sure that community, community centers were even going to be a thing after the pandemic. And for the support for our library, for the partnership, we are the envy of, of other municipalities, other libraries and other communities. And it, like I'm literally tearing up. But to, to see this delivered and, and under budget is just such a tremendous accomplishment. And, you know, people ask, you know, why do you do what you do? It's because of that. Thank you.
Hey, all right. Anyone else? Well, I'll throw in my two cents. I'm first going to admonish Mr. Carmison. You've broken a long tradition of governments for overspending and coming in over budget. You came in under budget. Well done. That's, that's, that's a feat in itself. The fact that the land has increased in value is not surprising. But again, as Counselor Johns said, what a great investment. But the other, the other thing that, that I think is important to note here is that, you know, we were, we were waiting, the magic number was around 40,000 population for us to pull the trigger on this. And we were waiting on that. And, you know, had we, had we made the decision sooner, yes, maybe costs would have been lower. But we weren't ready. And so we, we made the decision as quick as, quick as we could. And look at what happened. You know, we, had we waited, and there was a lot of municipalities that waited during the shutdown during COVID, had we waited, the costs of this, of this facility would have come in at anywhere between 140 to 150 million. So it was, it was, it was, it was very, very good that we made the decision when we did because otherwise we might have gone into debt, but we didn't. So well done, team. Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? Okay. All those in favor of receiving? Okay, carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Carmison, do you have anything that you'd like to share with committee?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Does committee have anything for Mr. Carmison? Seeing none, I will hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Crone. So that, actually, we have a few other departments with nothing in them. So K Administration, L Corporate Services, M Engineering, N Fire, O Legal, P Other Business. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you be able to speak to the upcoming council workshop?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we do have an upcoming council workshop planned for December 9, 2025. There are currently two topics identified. The first one will be Active Transportation and Trails Master Plan. And the second topic is going to be Broadband Update.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions, comments regarding the education seminars? Okay. Seeing none, we can move through to adjournment. Who would like to move this? Counselor Carruthers gets to move. Be it resolved at the meeting of the committee of the whole council, adjourn at 4:07 PM. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, folks.